To the agenda, Sam?
On your new business, we need to talk about the community guard.
On your new business, so B1 will be the community guard.
And I sent you an email about ordinances, most of which are financially related.
Let's do it, let's do it then. Let's do it under clerk treasurer. Clerk treasurer, so C1 will be ordinances. And just a clarification on your agenda, I did not get the change to Edward before it got printed. Mr. McKinnon's title is deputy chief for fire district two. So where he gives a public presentation, it's listed as, it should be rather than assistant chief, it's deputy chief. Just want to make that clarification. Anything else from the public? Is there any other public event or public statement to be made? Very good, then we will continue with the agenda as it is presented. I do not have a sheriff's representative tonight, and I do not have county commissioner Smiley.
She had to get the Christmas tree out.
Okay.
He was working on that. See what we had to do.
So we can't get to the tree until we get the truck moved.
Yeah, they got a computer issue and they're having it repaired.
Monty and I walked with our engineer and the team, construction team, about the dry wells that will be coming in the spring as soon as, well, the hope was maybe they could get them started before the snow flies, but they're not counting on that. So it looks like in the spring, there'll be 16 dry wells put in. This will take the storm water out of the lagoons, which is needed to be done. And the project that they have, you can't imagine the millions of dollars that are being saved by not having to pull up pipes and put in new pipes in order to do this. The dry well solution is going to save us a little bit of problem with some water backup that we have in the streets, especially over in front of the Cutter Theater and at the school. So the project itself is going to be, going to be an interesting one. And Monty walked through with them so that he's aware of what will be going on. And if you would like to see the map, having to do where all of these dry wells will be, that's available. And if you want to know what they actually look like, there's one just as you turn on to the circle. That was for another project, but that's exactly what our dry wells are going to look like. It's basically a very large pit surrounded by gravel, and it allows the storm water to naturally seep into the, into the ground rather than going into the sewer system. Any questions on that? And thank you for that, Monty. Any questions for our maintenance director? Moving on to the clerk treasurer's report, we had a backup because of computer issues. If you weren't aware, not only did we, we lose internet service, then we lost the computer. And so we had to wait to purchase a new computer and get everything re-gearied up. And so we are three months behind, but we aren't behind because we actually had information. We just couldn't get it all printed out. Edward and Tesson have been working diligently on these. We're going to take the August financial report first. A motion to, Tesson, I'm going to put you on.
September, October.
It's just September, October? Oh, I thought it was August.
It was intended to be.
Oh, well, that's because I wasn't there. Ah ha! All right, September financial report. A motion to approve the financial reports. Fran, you have the second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And know that these have been already reviewed. And October financial report. Motion to approve. And a second from Sam. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Approval of the invoice payments. This is the payment of all bills verifying that the invoices were duly paid. September invoice payments, motion.
Motion to approve payment.
The second, Sam, thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And the October invoice payment approval. And the invoices have been motioned. Second from Fran, thank you very much. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Before we move on, I just want to, I know that a lot of people were very worried after the events of Medellin. Know that Medellin Falls had already had a two-step process when it came to writing checks, approving checks, and now it's a three-step process. We just basically doubled our strength to make sure that any kind of embezzlement or inaccuracies are caught quickly and early. And I applaud the town of Medellin Falls, especially our clerk treasurer, both previous and Ed's doing just an amazing job. So thank you. Under the C, other one, ordinances.
I was looking, I was just looking through our ordinances to help me write our budget ordinance for this year, comparing the format to previous years. And I came across a couple things. There was an ordinance number 349 that set the council salary, the council honorariums and the mayor's salary. And I drafted something quickly to supersede that since we've cut those. And this one is a draft, not to be approved tonight, but I'll send it home if you guys and anyone wants to look at it. It just basically says that we should review those every year as we're doing the budget and set them as appropriate.
Excellent.
And I'll take feedback on that, and then we'll have to advertise in health hearings as we would with any ordinance.
Question on, is, and that is legal to not have some kind of a pay? An honorarium? Yes. Okay. It's totally up to the town to decide what the salaries. And in our case, they weren't considered salaries, they were called honorariums. Okay.
And then ordinance number 331 for 2016 established the wages of the clerk treasurer and the maintenance director as a fixed monthly salary. And the way it was written, it would say so many hours per month at whatever their current rate was. And I think that got lost in a transition somewhere because we have been filling out time sheets and having a fluctuating monthly payroll. We need to decide which we want to do and write an ordinance that reflects that.
Excellent.
So that's something to think about. We can discuss it now or just think about it and discuss it at the next meeting.
True.
But that's.
Gives us a little time.
Heads up that we need to make some decisions on that. Ordinance 332 from 2016, I stumbled across, which is an ordinance establishing a 6% utility tax of wastewater fund gross earnings, which seemingly was passed and then never implemented. So that saves us a step this year since we already have that ordinance in place.
What year was that?
2016.
Why don't I remember that at all?
So that saves us some time implementing utility taxes. We just need to focus on the water and the electric. The wastewater tax and the water tax are not set by law. The electric tax is a maximum of 6% without a vote.
Okay.
And that's what I had, is any more questions?
Questions? Anyone? Utility taxes are a way for us to find additional revenue. Welcome. Glad to have you with us. Home schools, but. You the last one?
No.
You're the troublemaker.
I try not to be.
Your teacher's.
Nope, I don't think so.
All right, any questions from the public on any of the ordinances? One of the things that, that this council has, has decided upon is with, with Tesson and with Fran is definitely involved in this, is reviewing our ordinances there. We have hopelessly out of date ones. We have things evidently that have been passed and then nothing ever happened from them. So they're tackling a huge process. So when, when you're talking about going back 350 ordinances to figure out what, what's been happening, that's going to be quite a project. And I applaud them for that. Anything else from the clerk treasurer? Edward, how are things going?
I've got just about everything I can from the old computer. We might need to get a real simple, inexpensive device to salvage the hard drive and then all those ordinances that are hard to get. Hopefully, we'll be able to get them.
I ordered that device.
Oh, you got it yourself?
We can recover that and we'll hold that up.
I think I've got one if you want, just use one to quickly.
I am so thankful we've got a geek in the room. It's just, we've been lacking that. So thank you.
And that's important for me to notice that although I may be able to do it, I definitely trust Mark to be able, that's what he does for me, because it does me taking the computer apart and hopefully putting it back together to work. Brand new.
Council and mayor's report, Ms. Fran.
Well, I don't have a lot to report, but I do want to say thank you to Tesson and Edward for all of the hard work they have put in and time spent. And they just did a great job. And the engineering company and landscapers that did the park did a great job too.
It's amazing. Very good. Thank you. Council position two is open. We move on to Mr. McGeorge. Park!
Well, the park looks good, in my opinion. We're always open for everyone's opinion on that as well, and we'll discuss that later. Other than that, it looks like things are about ready for winter in the park. I know you've been pulling out the lines and everything else, so I think we're in a pretty good situation there. I think we're about as ready as we can be.
Good job. Mr. McKinnon, there is a, by the way, council, you've got a copy of the sheriff's report. Only 12.
12 reports for October.
Yeah.
Was he not here to read anything?
No.
Yeah.
All right. I can read, if you'd like, I'll read it out since we have a crowd here this time. We had one animal problem, one citizen dispute, one deceased person, one juvenile problem, one suspicious circumstance, one, three traffic violations, one violation of court orders, and three welfare checks. So that was the law report. And then EMS report, we had a total of five calls for October in Medellin Falls, four were EMS and one was fire. The fire district had a total of 153 calls for service. That's down from last year. We had 208 last year. So things got better for us all over the county.
That's quite a draw.
It is, yeah. About a quarter.
Any questions? Thank you. Tesson Maxwell.
Nothing more to report.
Thank you. Mayor. This is your class. This is the elected officials' class. It is occurring on December 6th. It is costing $95 per person.
We can get that waived as a small.
As a small town, we do get the waiver, but I suggest even if you weren't re-elected this year, get this class under your belt because there's a whole bunch of new stuff. And Ed, I would suggest getting on and doing it as well because you'll learn a lot what you're elected. You've got to keep, keep us in line. And so, actually, what's real funny, I'm going to hand that to you. What's funny is it says, "Get your clerk to get you registered." So. I did hand that out before, but if you need a copy or if you want to go ahead and get that, all of you should, on the council, should get registered with, with the AWC. You set up your name, your position, what town you're in, and then you start getting the emails and the updates and you stay, especially when we get into the legislative session, what's going on. So that, that is, and this is the first year I'm not going to take that.
Is there a remote class?
Pardon?
It's remote.
Yeah. When we were at the, the emergency preparedness committee, they had a wonderful map, and I just wanted to share it. This is the Tacoma Creek Fire and how it spread. And so there's a lovely color code that shows you where it started, how fast it spread, what, and it's all what days it happened. And so they, they talked a lot about the fact that there are homes that were threatened. Did they lose any?
I don't, I don't believe.
I don't think they lost any homes. But the trouble is, is on some of these back roads, those barns or other structures aren't even listed. And so whether there was anything to actually protect in some of these areas was really a question, and so they're really working on that. But I just thought that was fascinating, how they got that fire worked out as quick as they did. Next Tuesday at 12:30-ish, as soon as they can walk over after lunch, I will be hosting the fourth graders. I do this every year. They come over and they learn what it means to be a mayor and what happens at council meetings. And they all, the big thrill seems to be sitting in the chair. They all, they all get to hit the gavel and sit in the chair. But it's one of the only times that we really do an extended outreach to the kids about community government. And, and I poked at the high school to get their kids, you know, require them to go to a council meeting or a county commissioner's meeting, somebody's meeting. Haven't made it yet, but I'm, I'm ever hopeful. So that will be fun for the fourth graders. And then the elves committee got together. We've got a cunning plan since we lost the big area to Rogers Park. We're going to condense it into the shelter that's next to the grocery store, which will probably work all right because some of our elves and characters are starting to be unhappy. They are unwell and need to be retired. And so we're going to redesign a lot of that. We're going to see, see about how that's all going to look. And we were gifted six Christmas, six artificial Christmas trees and enough lights to wrap the town up. And so we are going to have, we're going to be starting on the 18th, that's a Tuesday, at nine o'clock. Once again, there will be posters, and it will continue through the week that we'll be working on, on, on this project. But we're going to have the elves back on Fifth Avenue where they belong. And, and that is an exciting, an exciting time for all of us. And I want to thank everybody who's picked up Nan. You, you've been right there. I'm sorry you always have to work, but we'll peel, we'll peel you.
I'll fit it around.
We will peel you out of Sweet Creek subway. And then the best news I have is on January 1st, yes, New Year's Day, 2 o'clock, your outgoing mayor and your incoming mayor are going to basically host a little reception, and we're going to have a swearing in party. We are swearing in a new mayor, we are swearing in a new council member, which we are excited about. We are reaffirming everyone else's affirmation, your oath of office. And so 2 o'clock, January 1st, we figured that gave you enough time from your heavy partying on New Year's Eve to have a bit of a sleep in and then come with bright shiny faces. And I'll be getting more information on that out as well. And that is it for your mayor. Any questions? I didn't think so. Old business. 2026 budget, we've beaten that one pretty doggone good. Told you Kate Park update, we've got a completed park. And maybe come the new year, there will be some discussion about plans for the second part of that, what Roger envisioned for Down Below as well. And I just couldn't be more pleased, Sam.
So one of the things I have looked at and talked to a few people about is possibly putting in some cameras that we could at least record to see if anyone gets in there at night and causes any issues. I'll pay for those myself.
Oh.
And we'll get them set up, just use like a blink system or something like that. And just so that we can have some kind of monitoring over it so it doesn't get trashed, at least we're not.
Excellent. That's wonderful.
Speaking of cameras, I should point out, because we talked about electricity, there is electricity over there, particularly for the town. So we'll have to budget that if it hasn't.
And then any lights that we want to put up?
Sure. Very good. I always, I always thought it would be so pretty to, to continue that, that Japanese theme and have a zen sand garden down in the lower level, but we've got so many stray cats, I don't think it'd be practical. Yeah, I know.
I got trash.
Yeah, you get the traps. You got the skunks taken care of, now we can work on the cats. TIB update, nothing new. The speed lights are planned for the spring, but that'll be the, the next mayor's, I'll leave all of that information. And so we're looking at that, the storm water and lift station. Storm water is on schedule, the lift station, the engineers still have not finished arguing about where to put it. And so at this point, as long as it doesn't slide off the embankment, I guess we're in a holding pattern. But the grant money is there. The grant money is approved, we just can't get engineers to decide where best to spend $750,000.
Give it to me.
Anything else on your old business? New business, election results, already talked about that, community garden.
So I got a note from the community garden folks, and they were asking about insurance. Two part. One part was whether a million dollars as an additional insured would be, et cetera. And I said, that's normally, that it would be fine. But the other part was an interesting word is, was insurance even required? And it's like, well, I don't know about that. So I thought I would bring it up to council, and we can have a discussion about it whether, because we're looking at a long-term situation there. And do we have anything with, in agreement with the school district, for example, for the softball field?
I think the thing to do might just be to call AWC, our insurer, and ask them if that sort of accident would be covered.
Okay.
It sounds like we aren't paying for, and it's all public, it's all out in the public anyways.
Yeah, the softball field is, is unique. If it's empty of kids, it's our, it's our property. But if the kids are using it, then the school district has liability insurance for the kids.
Okay.
And so they, they would be responsible if there was an accident, you know, the bleachers collapsed or something. So, so that's a, that's a sure thing. Yeah, I hadn't even thought of that.
So again, I can't give you any definite answers right now, but it, I, I don't think that's going to be a major stumbling block in our standpoint if we can work through, when we see that.
Is that just, I think it works no bad. Like we send a potential draft lease agreement to the town clerk and some additional documentation, but if we did need insurance, like there's, there's some things we need to change in the wording so we could bring, you know, an amended proposal based on what you hear from the insurer.
Okay.
Thank you.
I want to apologize, I didn't notice that, I didn't get on the agenda as well for the, that has to do with the community gardens, so.
Since we're talking about it, you're fine.
Okay, perfect. So I'm with the pondery conservation district. I had emailed before about getting on the agenda to talk about this. So we've been, I have one employee that does my agriculture program, and he's been heavily involved with the community garden project. And we'd like to be able to provide more assistance and funding as available. But one thing that we need to do is to get Medellin Falls incorporated into our district. And I will point out right away, there is no cost to anybody for it. There's no, we're 100% grant funded. We have no rates and charges or anything like that, so it doesn't cost the town or any of the residents any money to be incorporated into the district. So, yeah, I don't know if you wanted to, like, maybe wait till the next one and put it on the agenda. I do have the paper, it's a pretty simple, you know, form.
How does being incorporated impact the town?
It just allows us to actually do work in the town. Like, I've been letting my employee work with the garden, but technically, we aren't really supposed to do that until you're incorporated. But if we had the funds and we needed to use them, so we, I went ahead and let him do it.
Very kind of Dominic for helping, we really, really appreciate, right? So he told us that the town opted out many years ago. I don't really know why.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I think that there was rates and charges a long time ago that cost, that did cost money, but we don't have that anymore. So that probably would have been why. Right now, the only ones that aren't incorporated is Medellin Falls and Cusick, and I'm going to work on Cusick.
Does it restrict any activities within the town?
No.
Okay. It's only a good one.
If grant funding dries up, would this town be subject to fees?
No. No. I mean, eventually, if we did decide to go with, and get rates and charges, which would be pretty difficult to get approved, then it would, but like I said, that, that's way down the road to even try something like that. And you can opt out really easily if, if that did come up and it didn't benefit you guys in any way, so.
What was your name?
Mary Malone.
And I have her sitting on my desk, which is why she didn't get on the agenda.
Sorry about that.
No, it's my fault. It's sitting on my desk, so. You're, you're right there, dear. And I apologize for that. I think the best thing is to look at the proposal and bring it up next month and let the council see. I think the only thing to worry about is if there are disadvantages.
Right, right. Yeah, there's nothing, we're, we're non-regulatory, it's all voluntary, we don't tell anybody what to do or anything like that, we just help out when people ask for it.
And so how have you been working with the garden then? What's, what's been your assistance with the community garden?
So Dominic's been coming up, I don't know what all he's been doing, honest.
Dominic, who works at the POCD, he's helped us make the beds, he's given us advice, he's also had a grant to give us plant starts, a lot of natives, vegetables.
Oh, and soil sampling.
And so he's offering soil sampling, a whole list of things. He's just been an excellent resource.
Great expertise.
Yeah, we just bought a whole new setup so that we can do the plant starts over the winter, well, towards spring and get stuff started, and we're going to donate a bunch of plants and stuff like that, so, yeah.
And Ed or Tesson?
I was just wondering if it overlaps with the insurance that Sam was talking about.
No, I don't think it would have.
Probably not, but.
Would you send another email to the town? Because Ed's been, we've had a backlog with all our technical issues, just to make sure we get a copy of your proposal.
Yeah, send it to Town Medellin Falls at Outlook rather than just to me, although if I, I will send mine on to, to Ed as well, so.
Yeah, I think that's that would be the best of the information I should send.
Oh, good.
Okay.
We'll, we'll double.
I think it's going to make some.
I think it's going to make some updates anyway, honestly, based on the insurance stuff.
I couldn't, I couldn't see any issues, but once again, it's not my decision, so...
So we have the information and we'll look at it.
Yes. Got that. Anything else for the good of the town?
So this is the form. I did email it to her as well, so she does have a copy. It's just a super simple form that would need approval.
Like I said, it's not really complicated. Unless we talk to anybody and we can help out.
What else do you guys do? I know I contributed to fire district to a grant.
Yeah. So we have formal programs. We have our agriculture program. And then I do have a... Putting out for that again.
Oh, they did.
They got, they got a... Um, yeah. Yeah, so we got that program. And then we've got a repair program where we do stabilization and all that.
I've got the, if you want to come on the walkout with the lights, sign up and I'll make sure you get comfortable.
And then we also have a...
Oh, yeah, you can do it. There were definitely... Of course. I'm going to take a regulation, I think I'll see you.
They just really like to get my study.
Yeah.
Well, because you don't want to walk in and out. No, we will definitely get you.
I am so confused.